Want to welcome you today to the Shreveport City Council. I call meeting now to order. I recognize, the Chair recognizes Reverend James Green, Pastor of Union Mission Baptist Church, to give the invocation. And then I'll recognize Councilman Grayson Butcher, who will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Thank you, God, for this day and thank you for another opportunity. We actually, you'd come in our midst and we thank you for what you've done and we praise in advance for what you're going to do. And let us operate this meeting in a Christlike manner. We give you glory, we give you honor, and we say thank you for every good and perfect gift. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
If you would face the flag and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Taylor, President. Councilwoman Fuller. Councilman Nicholson.
President.
Councilman Butcher.
Here.
Councilman Fuller.
Here.
Councilman Boone.
I'm here.
And Councilman Bowman.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the City Council meeting, Tuesday, March 9th, 2021, and the special meeting of Wednesday, March 17th, 2021? It's a move by Councilman Butcher, to have a second. Chair seconds, and any discussion, please vote. Motion is approved with six in the chamber and one out. At this time, I recognize Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Danielle, would you read the resolution? Today, we'd like to recognize Mr. James Elrod. Mr. Elrod, is he present yet? Come on up. We're gonna, we're gonna read the resolution.
A resolution to thank Mr. James K. Elrod for his service as President and CEO of Willis Knighten Health System. Whereas, James K. Elrod grew up in Port Neches, Texas, and attended Baylor University, earning a bachelor's degree in business administration and a commission in the United States Air Force through ROTC. Whereas, following military service, Mr. Elrod attended Washington University School of Medicine in St. Louis, Missouri, where he earned a master's degree in hospital administration. He moved to Shreveport, where he was named administrator at Willis Knighten Memorial Hospital, and on April 12th, 1965, he was appointed President and CEO. Whereas, Mr. Elrod's community service has included participation and membership on the following boards: Biomedical Research Institute, Louisiana State Fair Association, Shreveport Chamber of Commerce Committee of 100, Louisiana Association of Business and Industry, LSU Shreveport Foundation, KVAQ Public Radio, Salvation Army, and Retail Merchants Association. In addition, Mr. Elrod has served on the advisory boards of LSU in Shreveport, Southern University at Shreveport, and Bossier Parish Community College. And whereas, Mr. Elrod has served on the governing board of the American Hospital Association, Voluntary Hospitals of America, Louisiana Hospital Association, and its affiliated insurance trust, Chairman of AHA's Region 7 Policy Board, and as a Fellow of the American College of Healthcare Executives. And whereas, Mr. Elrod is the founding president of the Inner City Entrepreneur Institute and is an advisor to the Baylor University Program in Health Administration and the James K. Elrod School of Health Administration at LSU in Shreveport. In 2007, Mr. Elrod was awarded an honorary Doctorate of Science in Humane Letters by Northwestern State University of Louisiana. Whereas, Mr. Elrod is the author of "Bread Crumbs to Cheesecake", a book that details his journey transforming a struggling inner-city neighborhood sanitarium into a nationally recognized health system. His book has been used in training programs for healthcare administrators. In addition, he has co-authored several articles on hospital management topics for scholarly journals. And whereas, during the COVID-19 pandemic, Mr. Elrod has overseen the Willis Knighten operations and has treated more than 65% of all Northwest Louisiana COVID hospitalizations, resulting in providing care for more than 2,000 hospitalized COVID patients as of January 2021 and over 18,000 inpatient days. Whereas, Mr. Elrod has transformed the small neighborhood hospital into a major health system serving the region and is the longest-tenured hospital administrator in the nation. In 2019, he was named a Louisiana Legend by Louisiana Public Broadcasting. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Shreveport and due regular and legal session convene that the Shreveport City Council would like to thank Mr. James K. Elrod for his service as President and CEO of Willis Knighten Health System and the major role that he and Willis Knighten played in the healthcare, public safety, and cultural needs of Shreveport and the entire Arclitex region.
Thank you. Mr. Elrod, and to the council, to the mayor, I'd just like to say thank you for all of your service that you've done in the past and that you're doing now and you're doing in the future. Back years ago, black churches did not have fellowship halls. But you opened up the doors to a building over behind Willis Knighten North. And you only made one requirement for the churches in there. Once they had their function, just clean up. It was a blessing for us to be able to get money to build whatever structures we got now. And before, with Hugger Kid Foundation and other nonprofits, certainly you've done a great job. Just want to take, take our hats off to you today and say thank you. I'd like to present you with a small token of thanks.
As I say, on behalf of the council, mayor, City of Shreveport, I'd like to just present this to you today.
Make sure I protect this.
Yes, sir. Happy and much.
We've done this before.
Yes.
On a serious note, with you tonight, on behalf of the Willis Knighten Health System, Board of Trustees, our 1,000-plus physicians on the medical staff and almost 8,000 employees. I thank you for the kind and greatly appreciated honor. As you can see, I'm very proud of it. And thank you very much, Reverend Green, for remembering us.
Yes, sir.
Willis Knighten Health System opened almost a century ago. Imagine 100 years is almost a service. And as our slogan reads, "We're always here." And we will continue to be here for all the citizens of Northwest Louisiana for another 100 years, we hope. And I want to correct anything before we leave. I haven't been here for the whole 100 years. But close to, just only 55. But seriously, on a serious note, really, I want to thank you for your recognition. Shreveport's been my home now for 55 years. And for a Texan to say that they enjoy and love living in Louisiana is something different you normally hear from Texans. But I found this to be our promised land of service. And I thank you very much for your recognition.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Bowman is recognized at this time by the Chair.
Afternoon. I would first like to have Mr. Dagel, Chuck Dagel, if you would come up to the podium, please. In the back, I have Mr. Dunn and Ms. Jerry Dagel, Grayton Dagel and Ms. Brandy Dagel, and Ms. Pamela Bollinger. Your mother-in-law, your father, your mom, your son, and your wife is here. If you would go ahead, Danielle, just a minute.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to dedicate the 1,500 block of King's Highway in Shreveport, Louisiana in honor of Charles D. Chuck Dagel, the first and current Chief Executive Officer of Oshner LSU Health System, North Louisiana. Whereas, Charles D. Chuck Dagel has served as a Chief Executive Officer for Oshner LSU Health System, North Louisiana, from its inception on October 1st, 2018. And whereas, under his leadership, meaningful improvements have created a better quality of life for the residents of Shreveport, Louisiana and surrounding area by providing healthcare options and generating an economic impact. And whereas, Mr. Dagel leads the health system that has invested $200 million in North Louisiana. And whereas, more than 600 full-time employees and numerous physicians have been added to the health system through the leadership of Mr. Dagel. And whereas, Mr. Dagel was instrumental in increasing the minimum wage for several hundred employees, further improving quality of life and our economy. And whereas, under his leadership, Oshner LSU Health System has invested millions of dollars in annual compensation merit and market adjustment increases for employees at its King's Highway campus and beyond. And whereas, Mr. Dagel has opened avenues to make healthcare more accessible with specific consideration for those in underserved communities by opening a new $1 million Oshner LSU Health Shreveport Health Center on St. Vincent Avenue and increasing appointment availability at the health system's King's Highway Campus clinics. And whereas, Mr. Dagel also opened avenues for healthcare and contributed to the revitalization in the historic Highland District of Shreveport by leading the transformation of a shuttered hospital campus into Oshner LSU Health Shreveport St. Mary Medical Center with state-of-the-art clinics and women's and children's inpatient services. And whereas, under his leadership, $50 million has been invested in the infrastructure, equipment, and technology at Oshner LSU Health Shreveport's King's Highway Campus. And whereas, his vision led to increased inpatient capacity, critical care capacity, and private rooms for patients at the Oshner LSU Health Shreveport Hospital at 1541 King's Highway. And whereas, the 1,500 block of King's Highway has been transformed through beautification and exterior lighting projects under his leadership. And whereas, Oshner LSU Health Shreveport Hospital at 1541 King's Highway became the state's first pediatric trauma program and remains the region's only Level 1 Trauma Center and most advanced stroke center. And whereas, Mr. Dagel has effectively led a team of healthcare professionals through a worldwide pandemic to provide extensive COVID-19 testing, patient care, and vaccinations. And whereas, under his leadership, Oshner LSU Health Shreveport opened a hospital for women and children in less than six weeks by moving services from 1541 King's Highway to significantly expand intensive care capacity in preparation for a surge in critical care in COVID-19 patients needing access to the health system's critical care and pulmonology specialists. And whereas, in his role, he contributed key information to educate the community for prevention of illness and for open, safe SBC and safe return initiatives following the statewide COVID-19 stay-at-home order. And whereas, through a worldwide pandemic, he has led a healthcare team that conducted more than 180,000 COVID-19 tests, delivered advanced and accessible patient care regardless of the ability to pay, effectively launched virtual visits and telemedicine to save for patients and administered more than 30,000 COVID-19 vaccines. And whereas, while Mr. Dagel's commitment is demanding, he finds and treasures the time with his wife of 25 years, Mrs. Brandy Bollinger Dagel and their two children, Charles Rhodes and Grayton Bollinger Dangle. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Shreveport and due legal and regular session convene that the 1,500 block of King's Highway in Shreveport, Louisiana be dedicated in honor of Charles D. Chuck Dagel.
As I look around the room and I see so many people that I work with under the leadership of Mr. Dagel. And it's probably gonna get on me for calling him Mr. Dagel because Tim just told me earlier that it's Chuck. So I appreciate the work that you have provided for us. And I'm sure as I look in the back of the room and I look at Ms. Carol, who was so excited when I told her to make sure she's down here today. And I see the faces of Mr. Afrika and all those who are back on the wall there. I appreciate you, Chris Riley. I've learned a lot from this group and I hope that this is an even longer relationship that we have together. I did have Pastor Theron Jackson, if he would come up to the front too, to say a word also before Mr. Dagel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to Madam Vice Chairman, Mr. Mayor, all of the City Council, Mr. Bowman, thank you. I didn't know procedurally what we were gonna do. I just signed to speak only because it is my privilege and pleasure to have served along in this city with a person like Chuck, who is working to do some things, well, a lot of things, as you heard read. But I think some of the things that are overlooked. He was on one Sunday in attendance at our church to make an announcement that the Oshner LSU Health Center was preparing to change their minimum wage from what it was to a livable wage. That impacted and affected a lot of people. Some of you don't have that experience, but I grew up when my mother, when I was a high school student, made $8,646 a year. That's not a lot of money. But someone who was making $12 an hour now is making $25,000 a year. I can tell you that would have been an incredible impact at my house and as a child. But I just want to say thank you. There are so many accolades that you heard read. But the thing I wanted to say is that the commitment that Oshner has and the institution can't have the commitment if the leadership does not have the commitment. But it's being seen and I hope will continue to be seen in our partnerships in Moretown. We started this Saturday with vaccinations in our community, at our church, for folks who live in our area. That's a commitment and that is reaching people where they are. And I just wanted to say thank you to you for considering saying thank you in some sense to what the work of Oshner under the leadership of Chuck is doing. And not only that, I think we're gonna see some impact soon in inner-city communities where Oshner is deciding not to stay on King's Highway but to come to where the people are as well. So I look forward to seeing that as our city continues to advance. Our folks will be healthier because of the presence of people like Chuck and so many others who are serving with him. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I have Miss, our CEO at the main campus, Miss Afrika Duhaney West. I'd be remiss if I didn't ask you to come up, please, and say that word, it's just gonna get on me tomorrow for doing so. But if you, I would be remiss if I didn't do that.
I just want to say on behalf of our team, Chuck, I met him about a year ago and he took a chance on giving an African-American female an opportunity to lead the largest hospital in Oshner LSU's system. And what you see is what he gets. He is very compassionate about how we lead, making sure we have access, our community have access to care. He pushes that, no matter what we need to do. It's about access, patient care, the quality of care, working as a team, and changing the face of healthcare for North Louisiana and beyond. And his leadership has created an environment where we could thrive and do our best work and putting our patients and our community first. And I just want to thank you personally. You've changed my life and my family's life and this is where I get my healthcare. And we just appreciate your leadership.
That's it. I was looking at Chris, but he was nodding his head, so I would. You go ahead, Mr. Dagel.
Members of the council, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Vice Chairman, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for the honor to be a leader in this city, to be led by you, to be given the opportunity to improve access for all members within our community and in the entire North Louisiana community. Access to care is vitally important. Managing health and well-being is vitally important. You all have been supportive of Oshner, Oshner LSU. Thank you for your commitment to us, commitment to our organizations. This is really about the 30,000 team members on the Oshner Health Team, the 2,000 members and 1,000-plus medical staff members at LSU, the 4,300 team members at Oshner LSU in North Louisiana. What I get to do is I get to talk about their great work every day. And that's my job. I get to promote their great work. I get to promote the care that they deliver and the support that they deliver to caregivers within our communities of North Louisiana. So I want to thank you on behalf of Oshner LSU, of being so supportive of our organization. We will continue to expand. We will continue to grow. We will continue to improve health outcomes in North Louisiana. And we will improve, we will promote economic growth, and we will continue to mitigate and drive down the cost of healthcare for all of our citizens in Louisiana. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Nichols.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to invite retired Major General James Graves and former City Councilman Monty Walford to address us at this time.
Thank you, Councilman Nicholson, for this honor. Chairman Fleury, Vice Chairman Taylor, members of the council, mayor, and members of the Shreveport community. I am honored, sir, that you have given us the Shreveport Airports Hangar Owners Association a few moments to come back and see you now for the fourth time in as many years and update you and this community on what has been happening. Let me start so that the city attorney can relax. We are not going to be updating anything that has anything to do with current litigation or issues involved.
I guess I'll tell the police and when they can stand down.
That's right. Sit down, chief. Yeah, yeah. My former colleague in the bar here in Shreveport. Rather, it is upon the occasion of the nomination by the mayor of Ms. Kay Medlin, another esteemed member of the bar of longstanding in this community, that calls us to stand in this place again where 14 months ago in January of 2020, we stood on the moral high ground of sharing with you our commitment to be involved in the process of resolving disputes by participating productively in discussions. Now that process has been interrupted and we've had to turn to other measures and prosecute grievances in other venues. But that's not what calls us here today. Today, I would like to say how proud I am of another former colleague in the bar having been called on for this. And I would ask only that we be afforded the opportunity to visit with Ms. Medlin, to hear her visions for the airport, and to share our concerns in a way unfortunately we were not able to do last time. In that regard, I want to recognize for a moment some of the individuals who are members of our association. I want you to think of it as a community association and how you would want your members or any board nominees to engage with the leadership of a community association. On short notice, we've been able to get a few people here. We're not filling the two rows like we did January last year. But then we can't all sit together. Could I ask those who are with the Shreveport Airport Hangar Owners Association to please rise or, if you are already standing, to give a good wave just so that you can be recognized? And the council, the mayor, and Ms. Medlin can see some of the fine folks that we have in the airport's community here in Shreveport. Thank you. Have a seat. Now I also want to update you a little bit on what's happened in the last 14 months. If you recall, the central issue that had cracked wide open the relationship between the customers at the airports and the management of the airports was something called reversion. A slow-motion condemnation process, conversion of privately bought or privately invested in property to public ownership without the benefit of little niceties like due process or just compensation. Something that no investor I know of would ever sit still for. But nevertheless, something that was pushed hard by the employees of the Shreveport Airport Authority and by some officials in the FAA. Approximately three weeks after we were here with you in January of 2020, by the efforts of volunteers in our association, working and engaging with FAA officials at the local level, at the regional level, and even at the national level, we were able to compel the FAA to commit in writing and let us know whether this reversion that had been offered as a mandate, as a requirement, was indeed a regulatory and statutory requirement or simply a recommendation, a benchmark, or a best practice. On February 19th, 2020, Mr. Davis, the Director of Airports, received a letter from Ignacio Flores, the Regional Director of the FAA, who said, and I quote, "With respect to reversion clauses, the FAA does not require airport sponsors to include reversion clauses in their leases. This is a local airport sponsor's decision." That unfortunately did not end the matter here. However, it sparked around the nation from Billings, Montana, to Peachtree, Georgia, from Heber City, Utah, to North Little Rock, Arkansas. An effort by elected officials all around the country having heard complaints from their constituents, as you have heard here four times from us, to reverse the actions of their local airport authority boards and municipal employees and to reverse reversion. I will be sending each of you information on those efforts that you can benchmark on and see how these communities around the nation have re-energized the investment community at their airports, have built new buildings with private funds that have poured in, and by the way, fixed old buildings that have been eyesores. It indeed is a miracle to reverse the Venezuelan economic policies and let freedom reign. It's amazing what can happen. It's amazing what can happen. Before I turn it over to Mr. Walfer, I just want to say that in my discussions with people all around the nation, I have yet to meet a single individual investor who with their own money bought a hangar or built a hangar on a public airport who is in favor of reversion. It seems to be something that only municipal and federal bureaucrats are in favor of. But that's not how public policy ought to be made. I'm sure my friend Chief Raymond and his police officers would find that it would be much more convenient to police the streets of Shreveport if anyone driving a car on those streets offered up the ownership of it to the police. How much easier it would be for them if little barriers like the Fourth Amendment or the Fifth Amendment to the Constitution were declared not to apply in this zone. That's what we have been dealing with. And ladies and gentlemen, we thank you for this hearing. I want to turn it over to Mr. Walfer and consider how we can go forward and participate in the solution of these problems together. Monty.
Take off Oklahoma State. I really didn't want to wear it after Sunday night. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, we do appreciate the opportunity to be here. Jim has kind of stolen some of my thunder, so I'm going to dispense with a lot of the history that I was going to discuss with you. I will tell you that in 2017, or prior to 2017, development on the airports was booming. Hangars were being built. You could go back to when I sat where you are, and then Mayor Glover summoned the airport director and the chairman of the airport authority, and we had a meeting in his conference room, and he wanted to know what it was going to take to make more space available for more building. And that's how it was going. You couldn't buy a hangar. If you wanted to, you felt like a football player down in the three-point stance with your money in your hand, and somebody still beat you to it. 2017, Mayor Tyler's new airport director brought in a totally different business model, and as Jim has indicated, it was premised on untruths, falsehoods. That night, right after Father's Day weekend in June of 2017, the value of any hangar on the airport was gone. You couldn't sell a hangar. No one would build one. The only hangar that's been completed since that time was under construction and under contract. So, it just killed things. Well, okay, it did that, but it did more. And some of this, I'm going to assume you don't know about. Because of the actions of the Shreveport Airport Authority destroying the value, the assessor of Bocher Parish reduced the assessment on all the hangars on downtown airport by 60%. The Louisiana Tax Commission confirmed it. Caddo followed suit. Think about what that did to your tax base. It didn't hurt the airport. It didn't reflect on their income. It reflected on yours.
Would the speaker suspend, please? Monty, all due respect upon the advice of our attorney, we're getting into a gray area because we're in litigation. And so, I would ask that you refrain from going back and giving ticklers of it, okay? Would you do that, please?
You want to talk about who lost the tax money? I don't think that has anything to do with litigation.
Mr. Whitaker, can you give us guidance on that, please?
As long as you're not talking about any case that's currently pending, you're free to express yourself however you want to. But when you get into the merits or close to the merits of any case that's pending...
Stop me. My intent was never to do that.
And you know very well which ones are pending and what the issues are. I would ask that you respect the fact that you do not have authority to talk about pending litigation, please.
Okay. I'll tell you what, let's skip all that. All of this can be fixed and can be fixed very easily. In fact, I'm excited because we have a new board member coming on. I don't know her, but I have a great respect for her reputation, as I've heard it, and I think it will be very, very good for both the city of Shreveport, the airport authority, and all of us. I would ask that she and you encourage dialogue between the tenants, our association, and let's get things...I'm not going to the past, but let's get back. It's not hard to do. Nothing's irreparable now. And I think we have a great opportunity of...I keep...everything I want to say relates back. You're making it difficult. And I tried to write all this, making sure that I didn't in any way touch on any of the litigation, and I don't want to.
Mr. Walfer, if there are some things that you'd like to discuss with me, you are more than welcome to set up a conference. You and Mr. Graves, and y'all can come sit down and talk to me anytime.
I would really like that. I think that we could gain a great deal from that. In fact, I think that would be one of the best steps we could take. So, I would thank you for that. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to step over. I knew that line was there, and I was trying to keep my foot from going over it, and...
Thank you for understanding.
So, I apologize.
Colonel Walfer is not used to dancing around these landmines I am, and I think I can help us avoid that. I would simply close by making two points, and that is that it is my hope that going forward, we will recognize that board members represent the true owners of these airports, who are the citizens of this city. These airports are not owned by the FAA. They're regulated, but not owned. They're not owned by the municipal employees who work there. They work for us, not the other way around. The board members represent the interests of the citizens, and those citizens are united in their call to reverse reversion and go back to the way we should with letting freedom ring. Now, standing and complaining to government has gotten a bad name of late, and I would...I know some of you, and known you a long time. Those that I don't, I don't think would pick me out of the crowd as an anti-government bully booger storming the Capitol.
Oh, no.
No. That is probably not the person you'd pick. And in fact, I am proud to have spent over four decades of my life in public service, most of it in federal service, which began as a teenager when I first raised my right hand and swore to support and defend, when somebody named Lyndon Johnson was not a Caddo Parish Commissioner, but was President of the United States. I am indeed that old. And in that time, I have come to appreciate nothing more than a good public servant, someone who can marshal the power and the resources of government to support and defend and uplift the citizens. And that is what this city needs. That is what our airports deserve, and that is what I hope you make sure is in our future in Shreveport. Thank you very much for this time you've given us.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Okay. Councilman Green, you wanted me to recognize you next, right?
Yes, sir, unless they got in more guests. Is Patrick here today?
You got any guests? Okay. Councilman Green, you're recognized.
Okay. Patrick, is Patrick here? Patrick Furlong?
He's coming.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We say congratulations to the NAACP-elect president, Mr. Michael Lafitte. Congratulations, Mr. Muhammad, on your appointment as well, sir.
Patrick's coming. Councilman Green.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Patrick, thank you. There's a Miss Deborah Gerard who lives at 4384 Henry Street. Her phone number is 617-1766, and she has some consent decree work that she said has been going on, and everybody has been giving her the runaround. And if you would be so kind to take care of it, I really would appreciate it.
Yes, sir. I'll call her. I'll take care of it.
Okay. Chief, Mr. Whitehorn, over at Woodland High School, Gary has been trying to put some signs up, but he's kind of having a little difficult situation with the person who's kind of over that safety stuff, putting up lights and all that. I won't call his name because I didn't talk to him. And some of the kids are going to get killed over there because of the traffic. They just fly through there. They racing through there. Gary has been working, and Java's got involved on yesterday. Would you see if we could get somewhere or another, we could slow the traffic down over there and get the necessary signs up?
Yes, sir. I'll take care of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Green. Listen, on the corner of 70th Street in Jewella, there's a Family Dollar store there. It is the nastiest store in the world. They got trash. They just break their boxes up and put them on the side. Would you, and maybe Mr. Clark has to get involved, would you check that out and ask them to see what they could do about that? And also, a lady by the name of Miss V. Howard needs to talk to you about a store, and her number is 617-5805.
Say that again? 617-5805?
617-5805.
About a store?
Yes, sir, and a house.
Okay.
And also, I'd like to say to you publicly that I heard nothing but raving reviews about the Property Standards Court.
Yes, sir.
And so, regardless to...I'm sure she hurt your feelings with all the good work that you've put in for, regardless of what Donna Curtis say, you got raving reviews about the Property Standards Court. So, I just, I didn't make it, but all over, people are just happy. They're happy in my district and all over the city. So, you're going to always have some people who say bad things because they can, so just keep your head up and keep on working.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Terrence, Saturday in my district out there, we're gathering together eight o'clock to pick up litter and stuff, and I've already made arrangements to Mr. Whitehorn to have us a truck out there about 11:00 to dispose of all the stuff. But we're kind of getting a jump, a practice, a little brief...what would you call, a run-through? A walk-through?
Yeah, walk-through.
We're kind of like a football team, you know? We'll do a walk-through. Where are you meeting at? So, I just wanted you to be aware of that. There on Interport Drive, we've got all kinds of stuff, couches and tires and stuff like that, and they're supposed to help us with boom truck and everything. And that's 8:00 to 12:00 this Saturday, so... Where are you actually meeting at? Where are you actually meeting at? Starting... Well, I'll be up there at Donut Shop. No, we'll be there on Interport. Okay, so you're starting on Interport. Yeah, on Interport. Good deal. Okay.
Well, please up here, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Mr. Green, I talked to you today about the Masonic Lodge on Fairfield.
Yes.
And you might want to give an update just to the rest of the council, because I think we've all probably received calls on that.
Well, on the Masonic Lodge, basically what we did is we took throughout the old write-up, and now we wrote it up so that it will, the owners will have to come before environmental court. So, basically, we updated everything so that it would come before the courts.
I appreciate that. I have, but sometimes it's the claim part of District D, and that may be Councilman Butcher's, but I have gotten calls about that, and I think if you're...
It's close. It's close. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Councilman Taylor, Vice Chair.
I need to go with Madam Clark. I don't have anything, Mr. Green. Madam Clark, could you read Resolutions 32 and 33?
Resolution 32, a resolution proclaiming March 2021 as Women's History Month in the city of Shreveport, whereas in 1980, U.S. President Jimmy Carter issued the first presidential proclamation for National Women's History Week, and in 1907, the U.S. Congress declared March as National Women's History Month in perpetuity. And whereas annually, a special U.S. Presidential proclamation is issued honoring the extraordinary achievements of American women. And whereas, the 2021 National Women's History theme, Valiant Women of the Vote, Refusing to be silenced, recognized as the battle for women's suffrage, which was gained with the passage of the 19th Amendment in 1920. And whereas, for almost 100 years, women have been fighting for the right to vote. They made speeches, signed petitions, staged demonstration, and argued over and over again that women, like men, deserved all the rights and responsibilities of citizenship. And whereas, women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life in America, leading their collective voices to forge a more equal society for all. And whereas, women of every race, class, and ethnic background have nevertheless persisted to bring about positive change in their fight for voting, reproductive rights, gender equality, equal pay, and quality health care, as well as an end to human trafficking and suffering in the many intersecting forms of discrimination based upon race, ethnicity, class, disability, and sexual orientation. And whereas, many women leaders are securing not only a seat at the table, but also the head of the table at major corporations, governing bodies, and in once male-dominated professions in the public and private sector, from first responders, construction workers, IT professionals, and CEOs to vice presidents. And whereas, these contributions and others widen the circle of opportunity for women and girls across the country and inspire them to reach for new and even greater heights, knowing they stand on the shoulders of all those who have come before them as they proudly carry on their legacy of achievement. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Shreveport in due legal session convened, that the Shreveport City Council designates and proclaims March 2021 as Women's History Month in the city of Shreveport. Resolution 33, a resolution recognizing April 2021 as National Autism Awareness Month in the city of Shreveport, whereas autism spectrum disorder, ASD, is a developmental disorder characterized by behavioral and communicational affections that impact a person's ability to navigate social interactions and also cause repetitive and restricted behavior. And whereas, approximately 154 children have been identified with ASD according to estimates from the CDC's Autism and Development Disabilities Monitoring Network. And whereas, ASD is significantly more common among boys than girls, but can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, or socioeconomic group. The condition typically starts during childhood and continues into adulthood. And whereas, the first historical appearance of the word autism was made in 1911 by psychiatrist Eugene Buehler, who used the term to describe a specific cluster of symptoms that were considered simple symptoms of schizophrenia and an extreme social withdrawal. And whereas, in 1943, when pediatric psychiatrist Dr. Leo Kaner characterized autism as a social and emotional disorder in his article, Autistic Disturbances of Effective Contact. And in 1944, Hans Osberger published his Autism Psychopathy article where he described autism as a disorder of normal-intelligent children who have difficulties with social and communication skills. These articles were important contributions to the studies that helped classify autism as a disorder separate from schizophrenia in 1980. And whereas, with the continuous investigation and research on autism, World Autism Awareness Day was set to April 2nd, each day by the United Nations General Assembly in Resolution 62 of 139, and adopted on December 18th of 2007. and seven, to encourage member states to take action in raising awareness about people with autism spectrum disorder and support the research finding new ways to improve wellness and inclusion. And whereas, World Autism Day is observed on April second, twenty-twenty-one, to increase awareness to support family members, educators, and other professionals who teach and care for individuals with autism. We encourage citizens and businesses in the city of Shreveport to support this day with other cities around the nation by wearing and lighting their establishments and/or home, if applicable, with the color blue in support of the autism community. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Shreveport and due regular and legal session convened that the City, Shreveport City Council recognize April twenty-twenty-one as National Autism Awareness Month in the city of Shreveport.
Thank you, Madam Clark. For Resolution thirty-two, sitting on this horseshoe is a testament of how much that we as women have accomplished. I myself, along with Councilwoman Fuller, as we sit here, as I look at Attorney Thea Scott, I look at Shenarica, Ms. Rone, I look at Jackie Danielle, Tanya, and I see Lenis, just a testament of how far we have come. And we're not recognized when our voices are silent. We recognized when our voices make sense. It makes sense to your quality of life. So I just think that during this month, as we are recognized for our accomplishments, I want to thank every woman in the city of Shreveport for whatever home that you leave, wife, mother, girlfriend, whoever it is, whatever your title is, thank you for contributing to our quality of life, because we could not do it without you. I'm thankful to have my grandmother, my mother, my sisters, I even have a brother that likes to go over here and give me words of encouragement, but I could not do it without the support of my sisters. And my sisters transcend the color of my skin. So I extend this kudos out to you to say congratulations, thank you, and let's keep making history for viable changes. On the second resolution, National Autism Awareness Month, I think most of you all know how passionate I am about autism, because my son, who's twenty-six years old, was diagnosed with autism at the age of two. So I'm asking each and every last one of you that on April second to wear the color blue, post it to your social media, know I'm not gathering, I know there are vaccinations with COVID, it's still very present, but to show your support for the autism community by wearing the color blue. If you have blue light bulbs, light up at home. You know, I don't know if they have blue drinks, but if they do, sip it at home. Don't come out driving anywhere. Just make sure that you wear the color blue in support of the families that are affected within our community, because what I want people to understand in the disability population, please do not look at individuals with disabilities as though this is a burden. They are active and intricate part of this community, and they're viable for our growth. So that is my latest statement right now.
Ms. Chair.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Chair.
Councilman Green, you're recognized.
Thank you. Councilwoman, if you would do a resolution that we would color our fountain at the church, the water blue on that day, I'll get with the deacons and we'll do it.
I'll definitely do that.
All right, you got it. The water will be blue, so we won't be gathering, but you can come by and see a blue fountain.
Is any other council like to speak at this time, a recognized guest? Mayor Perkins, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We already talked about it, but I'm proud to announce that the Environmental Court had its first session held last week. These hearings will be held at eight-thirty a.m. every first and third Tuesday here in the council chambers, if anybody is interested in attending. Chairman Fleury already pointed out that his district had got a head start on this, but we will hold our citywide cleanup this year on Saturday, April tenth. We are partnering again with Shreveport Green to get our city cleaned up for the spring. I want to encourage neighborhood groups, community organizations, and youth clubs to sign up to clean up our city. The link to sign up is located at www.shreveportla.gov. And council members, if y'all want to get a jump on the chairman, y'all can clean up your districts ahead of time, too. All right? The countdown has begun for the forty-seventh Annual Value Classic, which will be held here at Independent Stadium on April seventeenth at one-thirty p.m. We are working with several community partners to sponsor the Port City Fest, which will be the ancillary event that will complement the game experience for the visitors in our city. Next, I want to just make an announcement that soon we'll be holding town hall meetings across the city to hear citizen concerns about public safety, economic development, and technological upgrades for our community. We are finalizing dates and locations for that at this time, and once we have those dates and time set, we will be promoting these public town halls, and at a minimum we'll have one in each council district. So stay tuned for details on that. Next, Mr. Chairman, Kay Medlin was here earlier. Is Kay still here? Oh, there she goes, okay, she's right there. Yes, Mr. Chairman, Kay Medlin is here with us today. If the council would like to have her come up and ask any questions, she is my appointee for the Airport Board.
That'd be good, Mayor.
All right. Thank you for being here, Kay. Just step up to the.
Come right up there, please, right at that mic, and you pull it down a little bit, you'll see some tape on the floor. Yeah, and you'll need to give us your name and your address, please.
My name is Kay Medlin. My address is six-two-zero Robin Hood, Shreveport, seven-eleven oh six.
Ms. Medlin, we want to welcome you here today, if I may go first, council. I just, this is a big pair of shoes that you're being, agreeing to step in. I know you know what's controversies that we've had out there, but I want to thank you for being willing to go and help be a problem solver. So we just want to say that we welcome you and we look forward to it. You've had, and could you just tell us a little bit about, you know, your past business experience?
I've practiced law for forty years, so I've seen a few controversies litigated for most of those forty years. And most of the last ten years, I've been a transactional lawyer, and I've specialized in dispute resolution. So I, when Adrian talked to me about this, when the mayor talked to me, I told him I wasn't really sure that my skill set was something that was needed here, and that was critical to me, because I don't, at my stage of life, want to do anything that's a waste of time. And so I looked at what the board does, and I talked to Oliver Jenkins, because I figured as the newest member, he could tell me, is this a functioning board? Do they really do things? I've been on boards that are too big or just, they don't really have a role. And he was extremely encouraging in terms, he particularly likes how diverse this board is, because he thinks everybody brings something different to the table. I'm gonna take this off because.
Yeah, thank you.
It's, he said that, he said that there were different skill sets. And I don't know him well, I know his mother much better, I know his son better, but he knows enough, I think, about what I do and what I explain what my past was. He said that he thought I, they're no lawyers on this board, that never happens. So I think the dispute resolution particularly is something he saw as, I'm always looking for common ground. I also talked to my partner and very good friend, Jerry Jones. Jerry said when he was city attorney for many, many years, he went to every one of these board meetings because he really liked the Airport Board. And I value his advice a great deal, not only because he could tell me about the board, but he knows what I do. So those two people were most influential.
Okay. Is any other council member have questions?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'll just say, Ms. Medlin, thank you so much for agreeing to serve on the Airport Board. You are a leading member of the bar in this community. I'm personally familiar with your skills as a mediator and as an attorney. I think the mayor made an exceptional choice in appointing you, and I hope that you can help the Airport Board and the Airport community move forward and beyond some of the present disputes.
I particularly appreciate that coming from you, John.
Councilman, aren't, are you saying that because she lives in your district, or?
Don't, I always know whether somebody lives in my district when they come up here. But no, that is not the only reason I'm saying that about Mr. Green.
Unless they live in my district and you think they're in your district.
That happens sometimes.
Sometimes they're just close.
Exactly, exactly.
And I should have added, what I spent most of my career doing after I stopped litigating, I was a managing partner of a law firm that was probably at least seventy-five percent men for twenty-five years. And that takes a lot of cat heart.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we thank you for being here today. Look forward to your confirmation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. I want to bring up the Director of Public Works, Gary Norman, to give some brief comments about the recycling program. So Gary, here.
Good afternoon, City Council, Chairman Fleury, Mayor. Did want to just give a brief update of where we are on our.
Pull that mic up just a little bit, will you please? There you go.
It's not many times that I'm taller than what the mic is. But just wanted to share a little bit about where we are with our, with our recycling or our efforts to get a new recycler for the city of Shreveport. As you're well aware, we put out an RFP for a recycler back before the first of the year and did not receive any applicants for the position. And so we went back out with it again around the end of the year, and we did receive four different applicants for, that submitted RFPs for the, for this job. And there were several, there were quite a few different types of proposals. The one proposal was what we'd asked for, which was a curbside recycling, there were a couple that were drop-off center type scenarios, you know, and there was another one that was kind of a recycle everything type approach. But anyway, we pulled a committee together that was to review the applications and the proposals. We have finished reviewing those. I think everybody on the committee, I think as of today, has submitted their information back to the purchasing department, who will score the sheets from each individual members of the committee, and then will, they'll, they'll put out an award letter for, based on the, on the scoring. And as soon as we have that information, we'll be able to give a little bit more on that. I don't want to call names and stuff until everybody has been notified of where we are with it. So we're hopeful that we'll have something. It's not going to be something that's going to happen, you know, really quickly, because, you know, you've got the situation of getting geared up business-wise, this is a large operation and a lot of equipment and things that are associated with it. So, you know, we're still several months down the road and, you know, and getting something, but we are hopeful that this is going to happen.
Any questions?
Well, Mr. Norman, I appreciate that update. As you know, I and other members have received consistent inquiries from members of the public who are concerned about our temporary discontinuation of recycling. It sounds to me like we're on track to resume that important service, and I appreciate your efforts.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Chairman, and just lastly, I want to congratulate Mr. Michael LaFeet on his election to the NAACP as well as president, and Mr. Muhammad stepped out. So I wanted to congratulate them, and that concludes my comments for today. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mayor. Those of you watching, social media, we've now moved the part of the agenda on reports. Anyone have any questions on the report section?
Could we discuss Mr. Green's legislation for property standards now?
Okay.
I mean, if anyone had questions about it.
I didn't hear a word you said.
Just asking if we could discuss the pending legislation that pertains to you?
Oh.
If anyone had questions about it.
Basically.
Do you know the number of that red hand?
I would have known if you hadn't asked me, but it's gone from my brain now.
Okay.
Which one is it, Mr. Green?
Right.
I believe that's correct, Councilman.
Yes. It's up to introduction, is that correct what you said?
Ordinance one thirty-eight.
I'm just trying to help them ski down after this part.
This is ordinance thirty-five, under Section C for introduction, not to be adopted prior to April thirteenth.
I don't think anyone has anything.
I'd be happy to hear a brief introduction, since we've brushed the topic, if you'd just tell us what the legislation does and why we need it adopted.
We're just basically moving the money within the budget that we already have to bring the positions that we need for Environmental Court.
What's the, what's the number, because thirty-eight's not it?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. There it is. Mr. Green, tell us exactly what this does. You're moving money over to create, to kind of help streamline the.
The department make it easier to deal with a lot of the cases, more paralegals, more management assistance, and also more crew members and crew chiefs for working out in the field. And it's not costing anything. We basically took care of everything from out of our budget without raising the budget.
Just internal.
Henry, we just moved some money around.
Yes, sir, we reduced some contractual services and made sure that we stayed within the current budget to make this happen.
All right. Any other questions? Any other reports? Thank you, Mr. Green.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We had a public safety committee meeting today that I feel was, was very productive. We had a presentation about homeland, what, I want to say homeland security, but about a camera system, they gave a demonstration that was, I think, very informative and something that we should start looking at. I think Chief Whitehorn is going to take that back to the mayor, and hopefully we can kind of start looking towards that. We also had some updates for, from the police chief about some recent crimes that have occurred. And I want to mention the poor little girl that lost her life at the, at the Super Eight Y in on Monk House for her family and for us to pray and continue to pray for, for her family, as well as all of us in Shreveport that the crime starts to kind of go down. It's a sad situation. But we had a productive meeting, and we plan to call another one really soon. Thank you.
All right.
Question?
Yes, Councilman Bolton.
On that, in that meeting, I saw some numbers that you had. Where did those come from? I missed the meeting, so I didn't know what that.
The numbers that I requested from our staff was, you know, we hear a lot that this is a trend of cities our size, and I'm a facts-type guy, and I want to, I want to see those numbers. And just for reference, I'll read these off. For twenty-twenty-one, I had our staff compare five lights cities in the South. The first one was Baton Rouge. Since twenty, since January first of this year, they've had thirty-one homicides. Mobile, Alabama, has had eleven homicides. Jackson, Mississippi, has had twenty-three homicides. Little Rock, Arkansas, has had twelve homicides. And Montgomery, Alabama, has had twenty homicides. We've had twenty-two. So the statement that this is something that is happening nationwide for cities our size and socioeconomic makeup is true. But my, my answer to that is, we can do better than that. You know, just because it's, it's something that's happening around the country, Shreveport should excel and do better. And, you know, my statement to the chief was, we're gonna, you know, I want to start holding everybody responsible. We're all responsible sitting up on this horseshoe, and these numbers need to go down. I want us to be better than this, not in the middle or worse.
I agree. Did the chief have any comments on that? I missed it, and I apologize about that. If we need to talk offline on that, we can, but I, I hate to see. Some of that was near and dear to my heart, and I saw some of that at work and.
And Councilman, I had several comments, the public safety. And Councilman, I had several comments at the public safety meeting. I don't know that I'd be able to regurgitate all of them specifically, except that I will say a couple of things. It is a national trend. That's not an excuse for us having problems in Shreveport, but this trend began May or so of 2020. Many agencies our size and larger have had historical high violent crime rates. Oddly enough, property crime rates continue to decrease, which is not typical. When you look back over 50 years, normally, crime is up or crime is down across the board. What's really odd about this particular time in history is that all the other crimes are historical lows. And again, this is repetitive across the nation. It's in Shreveport as well as other areas. Violent crime is at historical highs. Some cities saw the highest recorded number of homicides in their history in 2020, at least one in Louisiana, being Baton Rouge. And so, we're all facing the same problems. I could certainly tell you what the experts are saying as of right now. Multiple causes for it. I think certainly, the pandemic is a contributing factor, as well as other factors. But I'm not going to use any of those excuses. We're doing our best to bring it down. We have some intent to begin another specialized unit. It's been named a number of things over the years. Community response unit, directed patrol, something of that nature. And what I stated during the public safety meeting is we don't have the manpower, but we're going to do it anyway, because I understand that that's something that some council members have called for, some citizens are asking for. And we'll just, you know, when you're 100 officers down, we can be 108 or 110 down on patrol, and we'll function.
To be 100 down and to effectively be able to respond to these actions, how confident you feel about doing that? And I'm honestly not trying to put you on the spot, and again, we need to speak about it later. I just got too many phone calls and visits today at work about this. And where the chief is, I can't say the chief did this, the mayor did this, but I can ask for some kind of guideline or some plan of action or something that has to be put in place some way, somehow. And I don't think I'm by myself, because I know a couple of us have gotten that phone calls, and if you haven't, you will soon. This past week was rough.
Yeah. Again, I don't believe in reinventing the wheel, right? So, I don't claim to know anything that other people, predecessors, don't know, and other law enforcement leaders nationally don't know. So, I don't have anything new in my pocket. But I do, I'm a critical thinker, and I do research a lot of other agencies, what went wrong, what went right, and historical references. And I can tell you that it's been proven, and it's widely believed, that one of the key ways that law enforcement can reduce violent crime is to take illegal weapons, or to take weapons, rather, out of the hands of those people that should not possess them. That's been our focus, starting at the end of 2020. It's been our focus in 2021. So, to kind of go back to your first reference, you're hurting patrol a little more by taking people from patrol, and upsetting a number of officers because they're having to work additional shifts. That's kind of the crossroads we're at. But a proactive unit whose sole purpose is to go out there and try to make contacts with individuals believed to be armed and remove those weapons from the streets is kind of the best effort that the police department can put into solving the crime problem. These are problems that began, you know, when these generally young men, not always, generally young men. These are problems that probably accumulated from whatever life they grew up in, right? You can blame their parents, you can blame their teachers, you can blame their pastors. Ultimately, the police get blamed when they grow up and we have to go out there and prevent them from killing one another. That's a bad place for us to be as a city and as a society. And it's, you know, it's probably not fair to say it's police's fault or it's anybody else's fault. But ultimately, that's where we are right now, and we have to deal with it. And the best way for us to deal with it is to get those people off the street, and certainly, to get those weapons out of their hands.
All right. All right, well, that's what I had, and I'd like to speak to y'all for record if we could.
Certainly.
One quick question, Chief, and this brings up a point. Before the snowstorm, you had a couple of special operations. I know some of it was in my district, some of it was in Councilwoman Fuller, and I think even up in MLK. How successful were those operations when you dedicated those officers? How many weapons did you take off the street? Illegal weapons?
It was between 20 and 30 on a weekend. So, they were termed special operations, but we are currently restructuring, reorganizing. You know, we have one current specialized unit whose sole purpose has generally been narcotics, street-level narcotics, which crosses paths with firearms quite often. They're redirecting their path to firearms, and in the process, they'll probably end up seizing narcotics as well. So, they're adjusting their schedule to be on the streets during different, during timeframes where we're starting to have problems, which is primarily on weekends, primarily in the evening time, and the early graveyard shift hours. So, as opposed to it being a special operation, this is going to be a, this will be a shift. The plan for the second unit that we hope to be able to create, the directed patrol community response unit, is going to cover some of the days and times that the street level can't be out there. So, between the two units, you'll have between 18 and 20 dedicated officers that aren't necessarily responding to calls for service, but they are being proactive in their efforts to seize illegal weapons and get felons off the streets.
So, your credit, in two weeks of specialized operations, you removed almost 80 weapons that were illegally on the streets. That's the key to getting this under control. Because I can promise you, the thing that concerns me the most, and I've already, I harped on this before, but I just have to say, the thing that concerns me the most, these people that are killing each other are not Marxmen.
No.
And when they're shooting, they're going to shoot innocent people. And, you know, I hate to say that the ones that are fighting, I mean, like you said, they're bringing a gun to a fistfight, basically, now. But my concern is innocent bystanders are going to be hit, and it's happening. We're seeing it over and over and over again. So, getting these illegal weapons off the street, I think, is what we need to do. And you've got, you know, myself and Councilman Nicholson have already a lot, been able to get you some money for some cars for these officers. I'm 100% behind you. Anything that you need to be able to do that, if we need, if you need budget amendments, whatever, to be able to put those officers on the street, I'm 100% behind it, because that's the key.
Chair, how are we coming with recruiting retired boys?
So, we have enacted the part-time police officer classification. Initially, we're going to start with 10. Certainly can increase that number. I believe as of this morning, we had five or six that have reached out. And then, you know, we already have, we have one reserve officer that's very active that's going to, you know, volunteer to get paid versus-
That's real good.
He served for 34 years in reserve capacity.
That's real good.
And then, we do have some reserve officers that primarily serve with the special response team that we're hoping to bring on to might take on some more duties as well.
Chief, I want to ask you to comment on a pending case, but I will say that I pulled the criminal history of the man who is suspected of murdering a five-year-old near the airport last weekend and saw that in 2016, he received a 10-year hard labor sentence for being a felon in possession of a firearm. Because of state law concerning good time, he was let out well short of 10 years. And if he had served the whole 10 years that he had been sentenced to serve, he wouldn't have been out and able to fire the bullet that took the life of that little girl. So, I just say that to point out that the solution to this problem certainly involves the police, and it involves us, but it is a problem that needs to be addressed by legislators and policymakers at every level. The police can arrest everybody in town with an illegal weapon, but if they are not appropriately and consistently punished, if they get out without serving prison sentence that is sufficient to deter the same conduct in the future, then we're going to continue to have tragedies, horrible tragedies, like we had very recently with the death of a five-year-old little girl. So, I appreciate your efforts. I fully support the idea of a directed unit to proactively pursue illegal weapons and felons in possession of weapons, and I look forward to a report on the fruits of those efforts.
Thank you. And if I may, I feel like I need to say it, but the majority of those individuals we arrest for violent crimes, we have previously arrested for violent crimes or firearms offenses. It's the norm and not the rarity.
That's the linchpin to this whole thing. When we have the opportunity to convict and incarcerate a violent criminal, we've got to do it, because if they get out again, they're going to continue with the same behavior, and the community, the public, the city suffer.
Councilman Nick, would you give?
Yes, sir.
The most powerful man in the parish is the DA. The DA is going to have to do that.
Well, and I'll say, Mr. Chairman, in the case of this individual we're talking about right now, the DA gave him a 10-year hard labor sentence. And I don't know that that was an inappropriate sentence. My problem is that he didn't serve it, and that's a matter that the state legislature controls.
Got you. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Councilman.
Hey, Chief. That speed unit that, you know, you put on different streets to let folk know how fast they're going, would you see about putting one on Wing Gate by Woodlawn?
Yes, sir.
Whatever y'all can do. I really would appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Because during the morning time, they say they're driving through there like 55 and 60 miles an hour, and then in the evening time, they're doing the same thing.
Yes, sir. And I'll pass that on to state police and some of those other agencies that assist with those matters as well.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
I need to speak with you about drag racing.
Okay.
Yeah. Too much.
Certainly.
They say there's one of the officers out there drag racing. What am I, that true?
I don't know. But it is the drag race.
All right. All right, this- Public hearing, none. Madam Clerk, is there any legislation to be added today?
There's none.
Okay. We have the following public comments. The vice chair will be recognized and will control the time.
As I call your name, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Pastor Albert Brown.
Coming first, is that you? Should I be last? Good evening, everybody.
The last shall be first.
I feel special. How's everybody doing? Great. All right. Chairmans, Mayor, City Councilmans, all the workers and everybody here, I thank and praise God for being here. I wanted to see how are we coming along with, I get phone calls, but people about the Linwood. They're not finishing it up yet.
Well, as I, may I speak?
Yes.
What I understand, and the inquiry last week about it, was that they're still engineering, and they're quite, the northern part, they're still engineering, and I understand they hadn't released the bids yet, if I got that right. And that's from about Mount Zion up to 31, 32. Is that where you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they got it. The money's there, but they hadn't got it engineered.
But it's a mess.
Patrick, can you help us on that, please? Because I don't want to give you bad info.
It's a mess at Mount Zion.
We're talking about Mount Zion up to 31.
Yeah, right there with Goodyear and all that. They keep asking me. I'm doing y'all, I mean, you know, I don't mind doing y'all's job, you know.
Mount Zion, the 70th, an RFS was put out for an engineer, and we received those submittals, and a A and E committee meeting will be set up soon.
A and E meeting, that's what they told me.
Yes, sir.
We got to have that.
It is proceeding.
Yeah.
I'll let them know.
It's in the scope, I can say that. They're looking, you know, we got to go to the A and E and let the mayor pick the contractor.
Yeah, I'll let them know, because they saying, well, they ain't finished that, you know, you know, people.
Oh, I know. I get calls on it every week.
Yeah. And the cameras, the cameras, how are we coming along with that?
The cameras for the city.
Yeah, well, the cameras for us finding out about, you know, when they find, throwing stuff out there, and, you know. I know we got a lot going on.
You're talking about for illegal dumping?
Ma'am?
Are you talking about for illegal dumping?
Yes.
We only have three cameras for the city of Shreveport regarding that, and we look into expanding that, our camera supply. And so, today, we had a presentation at 1:30 in the public safety committee meeting that talked about crime and security and cameras as a whole for the city and for our specific districts. So, yes, we're in the process of going in and talking, because we realized that that is a huge problem. It's a huge problem throughout the city, where people go and throw their contents out the window consistently. So, yes, it is in the making.
Okay. And one more thing. I talked to, I'm going to get with Mr. Green and Mr. Clark, and I have talked to you, Mr. Mayor, but I'm coming back. I got to get all my plans together, and then I'll come before you all. And I'm going to need more than three minutes, but come back and put everything together, because I've begun to get it all together. But I got with Mr. Green and Mr. Clark about some things. I can't reveal everything to you yet, but I'm going to let y'all know as soon as I get it with them, and then I'll come back and share with you all what I'm talking about, because I finally began to get everything together. But I got to get with Mr. Green and Mr. Clark, then I'll come back.
Okay.
Thank you, Pastor Brown.
You looking good, though. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Pastor, I just really appreciate your hard work and your labor, and I'd like to also say that I have never witnessed a time that you came before us, that you did present great customer service and a friendly attitude, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Well, that's what I'm here for. I'm not, like I said, when I took on this job, I tried to run from it, but God kept telling me, go back, go back. But he told me not to come up in with all that arguing and all that fussing, because I understand you guys' job, you know. Me and you know, we understand that. And I know you catch flies with honey, not with vinegar. And that's the reason why I'm here, not to put you all down, but to lift you up. And I tell people all the time, they are doing their job. Just give them time, just give them time. You can't say "apricadabra," and there it is.
Do you give your phone number out, Pastor?
Huh?
Do you give your phone number out?
Yes.
What's your phone number? Thank you.
All right. Now, you going to take me to dinner or something? What's going on? No, you can call me, Doc. No.
He's going to get you a little office.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Pastor Brown.
FBI, if y'all listen, I'm not trying to buy a- Thank you all so much.
Cody Dunn.
Cody Dunn? What's he going to talk about, Cody?
3222.
Cody Dunn?
It's Cody. Duon. Duon, okay, I'm sorry.
Come on up, Mr. Dunn.
Duon.
State your name and address, you have three minutes.
Name is Cody Duos.
Oh, okay.
4320 Hampton Lane, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71107. I'm here to talk to y'all today about 32, semi-colon, 22.
Speak up now, so we can hear you.
I'm here to talk to you about Louisiana legislation, 3222. I've talked to a few of y'all. I've called everybody, and I've left messages. I ride a horse. I do it for pleasure. I do it to relax. Louisiana state legislation gives me laws and rules I have to follow. I follow every one of them. I mind my own business. I do my own thing. I don't cause any problems. I rode through Shreveport and Bossier for about a year, year and a half. No trouble whatsoever. Of course, Bossier tried to give me a little bit of trouble, and I squashed that on the streets. Shreveport started giving me a trouble with one officer, badge number 116. Don't remember his name. He ended up pulling his weapon on me, simply because I walked to his squad car. Now, when does it come unlawful or unreasonable for a civilian to walk up to a squad car and talk to an officer? I could have been telling him some little girl's running down the middle of the road. I see a kidnapping happening. Somebody's got a firearm pointing at people, simply because I asked him four or five times for his badge number. But he's not why I'm here. We have an ordinance in Shreveport that forbids me from coming into Shreveport city limits on top of my horse. I have to walk through here. Now, if it was for safety reasons- I can't control what she does behind me when I'm walking her. She could spin out into traffic, get hit by a car, anything. I could get hit because I'm going to jump in front of the car before she does. I feel passionate about it, that's why I'm fear shaking right now, because I've been fighting this for the past year now, and all I wanted to do was ride. I can kind of understand that ordinance a little bit because some yahoos right here being dumb about it got hit at night, but in that legislation, I have to wear reflective gear. I have to make sure that I'm visible at all times after dusk. I'm not allowed on sidewalks, but when I do see them, I do get off the roadways, simply to be courteous to everybody else that pays for the roads the same as I do. I don't understand why I'm forbidden to ride through Shreveport, and I would like to see if we couldn't get this thing resolved to where I could continue to ride because I make yearly trips, Texas, Arkansas. I would like to go over to Mississippi, but I can't because I'd have to walk through Shreveport before I could even get on my horse and take off ride. I have to be outside the city limits. So that put me five, six days of walking before I could even get on top of my horse and ride like I want to.
Time has expired.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Thompson.
My name is Christine Thompson, and I'm a trustee and longtime member of King's Highway Christian Church located at eight-oh-six King's Highway.
Ms. Thompson, thank you. Is that your address for the record?
Oh, excuse me, four-oh-seven Tealwood Drive in Bossier City.
Thank you.
I'm here today representing my church family to let you know of our concerns regarding the placement of the light structures at the corner of King's Highway and Line Avenue. The city engineer has commenced work on a two-million-dollar project to install new industrial-type traffic light poles at nearly every intersection on King's Highway from Hern Avenue to about Yuri Drive. We do all agree that our infrastructure does need to be updated, but the problem is the city engineer office gave no consideration to the negative impact these large structures will have on the historic buildings and in historic neighborhood districts that are along that route. The intersection of King's Highway and Line Avenue is the gateway to the federally funded historic districts of Highland and South Highlands, and this is the location of our beautiful church that was built in nineteen-twenty-three and listed on the National Register of Historic Buildings. Excuse me. Across the street is Byrd High School, which is also nearly a hundred years old and also listed on the National Register of Historic Buildings. You have all received a letter at some point from our trustee chairman, Dr. Dennis Wissing, who is the dean of college of education and human development at LSU Shreveport regarding our church's concerns. We residents and property owners in the historic districts understand we're required to maintain the integrity of the special environment in which we live, we work, and we worship. And when repairs or additions are made to the historic structures, extra cost and planning is laid out to assure the unique integrity of the facility is maintained, and we feel the city should be held to the same standards in repairing and updating the infrastructure. The city has upheld its responsibility in this regard when updating the lighting in downtown historic Shreveport, and we respectfully request that the city stop the current project on Line Avenue at King's Highway and install light poles that are more appropriate for historical neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jean Sayers.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Jean Sayers, sixty-one, twenty-one Fern Avenue, seven-eleven-oh-five. Mayor Perkins and Chairman Flurry and all the members of the city council, I'm here on behalf of the National Trust for Historic Preservation, the Louisiana Trust for Historic Preservation, and the Highland Restoration Association, requesting that you reconsider the type of lighting fixtures that are being used on the King's Highway corridor. I think you all recognize, as we do, that the King's Highway corridor is one of the probably heavily most traveled parts of our city, and as such, it has a visual impact on people. And I think we also recognize that visual impact has economic impact as well. So I'm not going to take any more of your time. I will turn this letter in from the president of the Highland Association, but I believe you all have received a letter from the Louisiana Trust Executive Director, who is an architect and a graduate of the Ruston School of Architecture. So we would be happy in any way that we could to work with you to enrich the beauty of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jean. Give that right over there. Ms. Jean, just give it to the lady right there on the corner, okay? I don't want to miss time yet. Thank you.
Evan Dowden.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Honorable Mayor, and distinguished members of the council. My name is Evan Dowden at five-thirteen Dudley Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven-eleven-oh-four. I wanted to introduce myself as president of the American Institute of Architects, Shreveport Chapter. If you're not familiar with our chapter, I wanted to quickly read about it. The objectives of this chapter are to promote and forward those objectives of the American Institute of Architects. Within the assigned territory of this chapter, the institute strives to organize and unite in fellowship the members of the architectural profession, promote the aesthetic, scientific, and practical efficiency of the profession, advance the science and art of planning and building by advancing the standards of architectural education, training, and practice, coordinate the building industry and the profession of architecture, ensure the advancement of the living standards of people throughout, through their improved environment, and to make the profession of ever-increasing service to society. Has been brought to my attention the issue of the traffic lights in Shreveport, and I'd like to feel called to respond as president of our chapter in addressing this. And I sent a letter to Mayor Perkins on Friday, and I'll just reread it because it states kind of what I'm feeling here. Dear Mayor Perkins, thank you for serving as mayor of the city of Shreveport. It has been brought to the attention of the architectural community that new traffic light construction is underway at various intersections within our city. I would like to express gratitude for the city's initiative in upgrading our infrastructure. However, constructing traffic lights without a proper historical study may compromise the authenticity of certain historical districts and the architecture that comprises that area. It is the recommendation of the American Institute of Architects, Shreveport Chapter, that the city allow time for an appropriate historical study to determine the most appropriate style of traffic lights to be used in order to complement the existing district being affected for the betterment of our community in our future. Please feel free to reach out to AIH Shreveport if you would like collaboration helping this matter. And I also like to extend an invitation, I think there's a need in our community to have a conversation about our city's vision and mission, and I wanted to open myself up to be maybe a point of contact with our chapter of architects and our city leaders to help bring about some vision and some direction in our future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Christopher Cole.
Christopher Cole, nine-forty College Street in historic Highland. Mr. Chair, council members, Mr. Mayor. I don't want you to misinterpret my provocations wrongly. It is passion for the city. I just want to make sure you understand that. What you've heard here today and what you've probably heard for the last several days is the frustration of a community who had their voices taken away by the unregulated actions of an uninformed engineer, a prior engineer, and the sad recognition that this can happen again unless city policy is changed. We can all agree that our infrastructure needs repair. However, it's one thing for public works to install sewer pipes under the streets where no one will ever see them, but it's entirely a different issue when they erect visible and terribly inappropriate structures in front of our most revered buildings. Your city engineer was correct in pointing out that city planning and zoning regulations only govern private property, not public right-of-ways where these pole structures are being erected. This needs to be corrected immediately. We recommend you pass an ordinance that requires public works to abide by the 2030 Master Plan, the Unified Development Code, the Metropolitan Planning Commission Regulations, and the Historic Preservation Commission for all structures that will be visible above ground. This will be one step in a long-term solution to protect and improve our cityscape. As for a solution at the intersection in question, please stop work until the community can be engaged to find a more suitable alternative. During this process, we ask for absolute transparency from the city engineer's office with regard to costs. The entire lighting project along King's Highway is two million dollars, and the latest I've heard from the engineer is that it could cost two-hundred thousand dollars to fix this one intersection. I find it very hard to believe that this fix would be ten percent of the entire budget. On my own initiative, I received bids for decorative light poles from the same company that furnished the ones downtown, and the cost for four poles would be forty-three thousand dollars total. Of course, there would be associated costs to correct what was already installed out there, but I doubt it would be over an additional hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to bring us to the two-hundred thousand dollar number. However, the best solution is to have only two poles, each pole with a twin arm to cover two streets, one in front of Walgreens and one in front of Exxon, and not in front of the historic buildings. The cost for two poles is thirty-two thousand dollars. I've learned over a career dealing with multimillion-dollar project budgets that there is always a way to solve the problem, and that cost is an excuse as the refuge of the short-sighted and sometimes the defense of the guilty. This is a time for leadership, not excuses. And I know you all inherited this problem, as did the city engineer, but this is where leadership means a lot. We fully understand you each have great fiscal responsibility, which we respect, but this is a self-inflicted wound that could have been avoided with policy and oversight, and now here we are talking about throwing good money after bad. I really hope this is a watershed moment for the visual identity of Shreveport when we finally ask ourselves what we value.
Mr. Cole.
Thirty seconds to finish, please.
Mr. Cole, will you finish your thought, please? That's my question.
Yes, thank you. I really hope this is a watershed moment for the visual identity of Shreveport when we finally ask ourselves what we value and that we commit to a vision for our city that protects and improves the cityscape. Yes, sir.
But I just, thank you for your remarks. You seem to have been the first mover on this issue, as far as I can tell. As I've expressed to you and others, I am concerned about costs in a community that is fiscally constrained, as we all know.
Without question.
But on the other hand, I would like us to make sure that our light poles are as aesthetically pleasing as possible. I'm particularly concerned about the King's Highway Christian Church and the impact there. I was married twenty years ago there, two months from now, so that place is special to me personally, and I don't want to see it marred, but I hope that we can, we can have a conversation with architects like yourself and other stakeholders and come up with a solution that works for everybody for this intersection.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate your comments, and again, it isn't all about provocation. We are trying to be creative and trying to help solve the situation. The last comment I'll just make is, a lot of this could avoid it if we had ever taken the vision plan from 2030 and implemented it as law, and so we have a gap in our governance.
The corner order. Does any council member at this time reveal any type of relief that they're willing to? Whose district is this in?
It's mine.
Okay. Do you care to speak on whether any type of ordinance or relief at this time?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Robert Trudeau.
Patrick, if y'all take the lights down and bring the Queensburg.
Can you use it at Southern Look North Fair?
I'll take them.
Robert was here a while ago.
Since the other one.
Oh, okay.
You come back to him.
I think that John was going to get him.
They're going to get him.
Is that there?
John and Robert back there?
No, he's not there. But he's not there.
Christopher Lyon.
Christopher Lyon, I see him.
Hello, Christopher Lyon, five-zero-nine Market Street, downtown Shreveport. I couldn't possibly say any better what has already been said about Line Avenue and King's Highway, except to add that, as Christopher so well put, that this is really a question about whether or not we're going to follow through with the plans that we set out for ourselves regarding the master plan and regarding our identity. I mean, oftentimes, we find that people say, you know, Shreveport, what is our identity? We struggle with an identity. And part of that, as any architect will tell you, and as I was able to discover through the creation as a producing partner on an architecture documentary about Shreveport's history, which included the King's Highway Christian Church, is that visual identity is a huge part of cultural identity. It represents who we are through the built environment, and that in itself is the core of what we're at in this issue. And as Christopher also said, you know, if we had just taken the time to do this right the first time, you know, there's no, I don't, I really hate hearing this, well, it'll cost this to fix it. Well, you know what it would cost to do it right the first time? We don't, I don't know if we know. I don't know if that number has even been put out there, but I hate this excuse of putting blame on people who raise issues as a reason why we shouldn't do things right. And ultimately, this is going to impact not just this particular intersection, although I'm glad that it's coming up when it is, but it's going to impact every part of Shreveport as we continue this revitalization effort, as we continue to replace our infrastructure. And so for that reason, I think it's incredibly important to begin that process now with whatever solution we can come up with and going forward. But I wasn't planning on speaking on this, but because unfortunately, the conversation kind of came to this earlier today, I have to add on a separate issue that, you know, the Shreveport Police Department is not a preventative body. There's a lot of things that they can do right, but, you know, there are other tools in this kit. Not every problem is a nail in search of a hammer. There are economic development issues, economic opportunity issues, and if we're going to talk about violence, we're going to talk about the things that are going wrong in our city, we can't just be looking through a narrow lens. And I know that there are people who have been looking at these issues. I know there have been a lot of efforts to look into economic development, but there are a lot of stones that have been left unturned, and I think it's a shame that what the discussion that's happening up here about violence, as horrible as it is, did not come down to a discussion about what we're doing to prevent violence in the first place. And I just, I heard people in the audience just shaking their heads about the discussion that was happening, and I've got to encourage you guys to think bigger about prevention of issues, whether it's coming up with a way to talk about infrastructure or a way to talk about violence or anything else. We've got to start having conversations about what we want to do and do that instead of looking at it after the fact. That's my time.
Thank you, Chris.
Ian Propp.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Ken Crepp, one-five-seven Archer Avenue, Shreveport, seven-one-one-zero-five. I'm going to hit a few topics in the three minutes. At the fairgrounds meeting and later at the convention center, I mentioned to Mark Sweeney that we have city rights of way that are not governed by the UDC. They're still not. We need an ordinance. We need city rights of way to be governed by aesthetics. Unfortunately, I don't know what Mr. Sweeney did with it. Apparently, it never made it. You know, it was a hundred-and-seventy-three years ago, Dickens wrote Great Expectations, and- You know, it was 173 years ago Dickens wrote Great Expectations, and I have great expectations for this city. And I want to thank Councilwoman Taylor for not jumping on me when I called her Fuller, but that's my Asperger's. And April 2nd is perfect for blue. Perfect. It's Good Friday. I'm feeling blue with my savior on the cross. Perfect. And the Infrastructure Committee, when Chair Fuller calls a meeting, and we have a three-week gap between here and the Thomas Jefferson Birthday Meeting, April 13th. Let's have an infrastructure meeting, a perfect place for Christopher and Mark and Ms. Sayers and these others, a perfect opportunity to have an agenda item at the Infrastructure Committee meeting about rights of way in the city, how we handle our infrastructure. Engineers are driven by cost efficiency and effectiveness. But other cities, many in Tennessee, some in Illinois and Indiana, have their rights of way governed by their master plan, by their Historical Preservation Committee. A truly progressive city does not say it's in the city, it's not privately owned, we can't do anything. We can and must do something about it. And finally, I see people come up here and the Asperger's kicked in. I see Monty up here, and I call him Landslide because he won by six votes over Judge Shiva Sims in '02. And I keep thinking about the family on East Robinson, the man and the woman and the daughter at LSU S, all three of whom were going to vote for Shiva, but told me later, the Monday after the election, my friend called me and said, "Ken, we all voted for Monty." If that family voted for Shiva, it would have been a flat-footed tie. And then I see Ms. Medlin come up here at Medlin, and she's now on the Airport Board, I hope. And then I remember 30 years ago today, bringing a pizza to her neighbor on Robin Hood on a Saturday night, March 23rd of '91 was a Saturday. I can have no trouble with the numbers, but I can't identify a councilwoman properly. That's the Asperger's. Finally, ordinance 35 is a good one. I've talked briefly with Terrence Green, and I hope in three weeks we pass it. We did it within the budget, and we should do that ordinance 35. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coe. Bravo. Her last name. Charles Secard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Chairman, and members of the council. I'm Charles Secard. My address is 6129 Galen Drive, Shreveport 71105, phone number 318-573-6862. Don't have a landline anymore. What I'm here to address y'all about and my concern is we are now in the process of getting 5G towers. The city regulations or recommendations is, first off, they're on connector streets, then they're on arteries, and then into residential. I'm on a residential street. They've already marked the spot where they're going to do it. There's another one I know of over on River Road, another one on Rossiter. If you look at it, the limitations of 5G is they're almost line of sight. If you Google Map these locations, you're talking 400 yards between the towers. The towers is the problem. It's not the 5G. The city regs recommend that the antenna itself be placed on an existing structure, light pole, utility pole, doesn't matter. The gentlemen and gentlewomen that were here before me speaking about the King's Highway Christian Church, this falls into what exactly they were talking about when it comes to architecture. Any of you, where you live, you don't want to walk out and see on your city utility easement, which we all call the neutral zone, having a 35-foot-tall tower. To give you an idea, that's what, about 12 feet on that? Three times that height. Three times that height, ladies and gentlemen. That's what you're talking about walking out and seeing every morning, when you have a light pole across the street that you could put an antenna on. Please add this to your agenda, that it can be addressed. Do not permit a tower in a residential area until this is addressed, because that way, we don't have to come back and undo what we already did, and we're not having the discussion that y'all are having to face at King's Highway and Lyon Avenue. So I appreciate your time. I appreciate you listening to us, and think about it. Yes, sir.
I'm in Southern Hills. I'm in Southern Hills.
Yes, sir.
I live on Brookside Circle there off the Baird Road. The street up is Baird Circle. We have one of the first 5G towers there on the corner. I listen very carefully. You can kind of paint a different picture than what I actually see there on the tower. It's not, it didn't come across to me as a bad-looking piece of equipment there. And it's right on the corner in the neutral zone, like you're talking about. I haven't received any complaints, and when we negotiated that ordinance, I think we put in something like $3,500 for them to pay us, or something along that, for the use of that neutral zone. So they're paying, you know, for the use of it. But I will look at it, see, but I just don't see what you have described.
Councilman, what I am describing to you is what was told to me in emails by Mr. Redmond, who is one of the city engineers. He further described that the density would be at least 60 per square mile per company, is the way I understood the email. I could have misunderstood it. But in the city of Shreveport alone, you have 123 square miles. That's 7,380 towers. If every cell company has to put up their own tower, or if you just take the top four, multiply that number by four. That's a huge number of towers in a neighborhood. It disrupts the way the neighborhood looks when you could easily place the equipment on an existing structure, and nobody knows about it.
Mr. Chairman, can I comment on this really quick? He's absolutely right, by the way. Our ordinance is progressive as it can possibly be, considering where current law is. But we are, myself and the CTO, are actually speaking with the chairwoman from the FCC tomorrow, because right now, we can't legally require telecoms to co-locate those towers. So what you're seeing now is actually not near what you're going to see over the upcoming months as these telecoms start to make investments. And I guarantee you, the feedback we've gotten today about that light at King's Highway is going to be way worse over the next coming months. But again, but council, I commend you on how far we've gone, but we have some legal barriers right now to where we can't prevent them from doing it, and we're trying to work through it. But, you know, these are things that's happening at the state level and the federal level.
Mayor, I appreciate that very much, but are we not going to have problems with SWPC and them wanting to put it on? I think that's what we talked about before. They didn't want nothing put on.
Yeah, so we tried to, we talked to the telecoms. We met with some of them. We talked to SWPC. But we can't, we can make suggestions, but we can't mandate anything. So at the end of the day, that's the problem that we're going to have. And yeah, we're getting licensing fees, but it's not going to nearly make up for the eyesore and various other setbacks on this. And Keith Hanson is here. Do y'all want to talk more technical about this? I don't want to get too far out of my range, but it's going to be a problem that we're going to hear about quite often over the next couple of months.
My problem is the price of the 5G phone. Focus on social security, King's 40.
Mine, too. Mr. Mayor, in regards to your statement about this, one of the things that I see as necessary is if they're going in as a utility, they should be regulated at the PSC. Because you pick up the phone and call the PSC, because that's the first thing I did. I see a hole out in the yard. It's not our problem, and you hang up. And we cannot, what it amounts to, if you think about your own home, you go out in the morning to walk your dog or just say hello to a neighbor, and all of a sudden, you've got a structure that was there that wasn't there, that when you bought your home, you figured, "Hey, this is it." You know, they may come dig and fix the sewer line, fix a gas line, water line, whatever. But you don't expect them to build a 35-foot-tall tower. And, you know, if you put that in a neighborhood, if you just say, "Hey, I'm going to put a 35-foot flagpole in my yard," how many people would be down here to say, "No, you have to take that down"?
You make a great point. As I said, this body has done everything they can. As a matter of fact, Shreveport and Baton Rouge has the most progressive ordinances out there right now to try to control this. But I hope our citizens have that enthusiasm and talk to our state officials, talk to our federal officials, because they would be the ones to determine if the PSC had jurisdiction over these telecoms and other things. So I agree with you. We're on your side on this. This is just something that this body, you know.
It would be nice if y'all would pass a resolution for the legislature so that we can go before the legislature and ask them to put these companies under the PSC. And then we're going to have more control where things go. Not only that, we're going to be able to get better service to the consumer.
I support that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just say that I appreciate Mayor Perkins and Mr. Secard's remarks. I have received a number of complaints about these towers going up. And as Mrs. Secard indicated, we're talking about more than 7,000 towers to cover this entire city for one telecommunications company. I'll say for myself that I favor as aggressive a position as is legally supportable in dealing with these telecommunications companies. Because, look, they care about rolling out their network and collecting monthly fees for their 5G service. They're not worried about the aesthetic impact of thousands of towers on our communities. So this is something we've really got to focus on as a body, because if you're not getting complaints yet, you're going to get them in the coming months. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
John Perkins. Dwayne Baker. Mr. Baker, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dwayne Baker. I reside at 2825 Highland Avenue. And first of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members, citizens of Shreveport. I've come here today to address a concern I had about a local news report I saw last week. And from the point I saw the report until the day, I've been kind of disturbed. Even though it was only about the cruising issue, this happens every year. I mean, there's local broadcast as if there's fanfare that now the Shreveport Police Department is going to start cracking down on those who cruise throughout the city. I'm sorry, not throughout the city. They specifically say in certain communities. More specifically, we all know it's an African-American community. I'd also like to commend the news report in this particular issue for being able not to find one but two individuals to recite the myths about black-on-black crime and blacks killing blacks. As a matter of fact, I heard it here today. My main concern is who's policing the police? In other words, why is it that year after year, we find it so easy to unleash police departments on our youth? And that's exactly what we do. And yes, I'm aware of the fact, and I'm pretty sure I'll probably hear it today, that 99% of our police officers are fine, upstanding citizens, so on and so forth. But we know what's been happening since the inception of police departments. Nothing has changed, and I want to thank the young man who mentioned earlier that we sit up here and talk about this crime. As a matter of fact, someone up here mentioned social economic issues. The police officer basically agreed, but nobody said anything about a solution pertaining to social economics. It's always lock them up, as if though that's not the reason their offspring are the way they are. I mean, it's been documented. I'm not making this up. As a matter of fact, some of these reports I've read when I was in high school, some 30 years ago. As it relates to cruising, how many young African-Americans are going to get swept up in this? I mean, they're not just trying to stop people from cruising. There's going to be arrests.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Your time is up, sir.
It always is, but thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Marvin Mohammed.
Marvin Mohammed, 2808 Hershey D. Wilson. I first got a little house cleaning to do. I need to give an apology to the Shreveport Times. Last week, I made the statement that it was them that erroneously said that 14 grams of marijuana were worth $200, when it was actually the KTBS reporter, Gary May, that did that. So I wanted to correct that because I got a call from them. You have to pardon me if I don't take off my mask. Not because I'm afraid to catch the coronavirus, but actually because I'm disgusted with the vomit that I heard from this podium today. And I might need more than three minutes. First and foremost, I listened to the general and the colonel come here today to speak about their grievance, but yet no one asked the colonel or the general about why the airport authority is in a deficit, why the Shreveport Regional Airport is carrying the downtown airport because of substandard lease agreements. But he was given over 30 minutes to speak today. I'm also disgusted because I listened to Chief Ben Raymond's press conference earlier today. And he spoke and he styled black men, males and boys, pretty much as savages. He said, since he likes statistics, 68% of the homicides that occurs in the city of Shreveport is because of drugs and gangs. And we have induced that if you're not involved in gangs and drugs, you're going to be okay. The last that I remembered, we had a federal employee, a postman that was killed while out on the job just last year. From what I remember, the Cooper Road community, the Green Oaks family lost a young teenager, a sportsman, a great student, because of mistaken identity when he was killed on I-220 coming from football practice. Last I remember, a two-year-old, well, two-two-year-old, or was it three-two-year-old, was murdered in Shreveport. I guess they was drug addicts. I guess they was gang bankers. He then says the solution is to incarcerate. We need more police. Well, Louisiana, since he likes statistics, leads the country in incarceration rates. Per 100,000, the number is 980. Per 100,000, the number is 980, since he likes statistics. So evidently, that's not the solution. You know, Victor Hugo, a French novelist and...
Mr. Mohammed?
Yes.
Wrap it up. You've got 30 seconds. Bring it on in.
Thank you. Victor Hugo, a French novelist and poet, he said that if the soul is left to darkness, it will commit sin. He went further to say that the guilty one, it's not the one that commits the sin, it's the one that created the darkness. Dr. King, in his last address to the Southern Christian Leadership Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, quoted Victor Hugo. Who is the real savage in this matter? We don't need more police. We need opportunity. We need hope. And I close, Councilwoman Taylor. In the Book of Romans, Councilman Green, in, I think it's chapter 12, verse 12. You can help me if you can. I know that's your day job. But it says, "Be joyous in hope, patient in affliction, and faithful in prayer." Black people in the city has been patient in affliction while we pass on what dollars go to the better parts of the city. I'm disgusted listening to someone talk about lights when our communities look blight.
Mohammed?
Yes.
You're done.
Thank you. Any questions? Anybody?
Amen to your script.
I have some more to say. So any questions?
Todd Davis. Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, apartment 110, 71101. I said I would do this today. I wish Harry Townsend a happy birthday today as he is celebrating his birthday. He didn't, he said he didn't feel like a day older, but I did wanna wish him a happy birthday because I gave my word that I would do this. Now, I talked two weeks ago, and I mentioned about this girl named Shannon who destroyed the downstairs front door at the M Building where I live at Oak Meadows Apartments. And then she lied about it when she was confronted about it. I told the new manager that just came on recently what has happened, and she's got a work order to get the door and window either replaced with a brand-new door and window or just to get a brand-new door for this. So she's gonna take care of all the stuff that was all messed up a short time back. Shannon should've known better than to do what she did. And she's been told to leave me and the neighbors alone. But if she causes any more trouble or if she does any more things like that again, I'll just have to take Chief Raymond's advice and just get the law out there to deal with this woman. She seems to be armed and dangerous. Also, speaking about poles and new traffic lights, well, Centenary Boulevard and Olive Street, they could probably use new traffic lights with arms and also sensor cameras, because the ones that we're dealing with right now are not helping out much. When we have people running a red light or walking a red light just to get from Oak Meadows or another place, just going over to Family Dollar and then coming back to Oak Meadows or wherever they live, this has just gotten ridiculous. They're getting away with it, and it's going too far and needs to stop. So we need arms and new traffic lights, sensor cameras, if it's not too much to ask for. And also, Levett, I got the chance to talk to Jeff Everson earlier. He was here and requested that I ask you to please give him a call when you have the opportunity, because he said he'd like to talk to you right away.
Did he say what about?
I'd rather not.
I'm messing with you.
Uh-uh.
His concludes public comments.
We have no executive appointed speaks considered today, and there are no items under consent agenda introduction or consent items to be adopted. Madam Clerk, please proceed with the regular agenda legislation.
Resolution 28, approving Inferno Manufacturing located at 115 R. Cow Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, for participation in the industrial tax exemption program.
So moved.
So moved and seconded.
It was moved by Councilman, who was it?
Green and seconded by...
Councilman Nicholson.
Any discussion? Let's vote. And it passes seven to zero.
Resolution 29, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Precision Cartographics for redistricting reapportionment consultant services.
Motion postponed.
Motion postponed. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by the vice chair. Any discussion? Then let's vote. Postponed. And that passes seven to zero.
Resolution 30, adopting the system survey and compliance questionnaire required by the Legislative Auditor's Office of the State of Louisiana.
So moved.
Second. Motion and seconded by, motion by Councilman Green, seconded by Councilman Butcher. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes seven to zero.
Resolution 31, authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with NOCCI, Inc., relative to the 2021 Bayou Classic Football Game.
Motion postponed.
Motion postponed. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Nicholson. That was a motion made by Councilman Green. Any discussion? Let's vote. Motion postponed has been approved. Seven to zero.
Resolution 32, proclaiming March 2021 as Women's History Month in the city of Shreveport.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Chair and seconded by Councilwoman Fuller. Any discussion?
By both the women. Just say that.
That's right. It's girls' thing. Don't worry about that.
Let us vote.
Comments like that are why we should have two months. Thank you.
And that passes seven to zero.
Resolution 33, proclaiming April 2021 as National Autism Awareness Month in the city of Shreveport.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been approved, I mean, made and seconded by, by, by Mr. Butcher. Any discussion? Let us vote. And that is approved, seven to zero.
Resolution 34, to thank Mr. James K. Elrod for his service as president and CEO of Willis Knighten Health System.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Then let's vote. Okay? That passes.
Resolution 35, to dedicate the 1,500 block of Kings Highway in honor of Charles D. Chuck Daigle, the first and current chief executive officer of Ochsner LSU Health System, North Louisiana.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded by Councilwoman Fuller. Motion by Councilman Bubman. Any discussion? Then let's vote. Okay? And that passes. Madam Clerk, will you proceed with the introduction of resolutions?
Resolution 36, authorizing the use of certain equipment by Sports Spectrum Race Management. Resolution 37, authorizing the use of certain equipment by the Downtown Development Authority. Resolution 38, authorizing the use of certain equipment by the Department of the Air Force, Barcsdale Air Force Base. Resolution 39, authorizing a request to be made to the Louisiana Department of Natural Resources, Louisiana State Mineral and Energy Board, to seek public bids for an oil, gas, and mineral lease involving the property located in districts A and G and described herein, and to execute the lease for certain mineral interests owned by the city of Shreveport, and to authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents related to the intent of this resolution.
So moved.
Okay, we don't have to do anything on that.
I've got a question. On Resolution 39... On Resolution 39, is there a way that... I need to have a meeting with the administration on this.
Madam Clerk, would you proceed with the introduction ordinance not to be adopted prior to April 13?
Ornet 35, amending the 2021 General Fund Budget. Ornet 36, amending the 2021 Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ornet 37, amending the 2021 General Fund Budget. Ornet 38, amending the 2021 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Ornet 39, amending the 2021 General Fund Budget. Ornet 40, amending the 2021 Airport Capital Projects Fund Budget. Ornet 41, amending the 2021 Airport Enterprise Fund Budget. Ornet 42, declaring certain city property to be surplus property. Ornet 43, closing and abandoning a portion of East Wilkinson Street dedication in sections 5 and 8, Township 17 North, Range 13 West. Ornet 44, closing and abandoning a portion of the 10-foot-wide alley dedication in Block O of the Southside Park Annex in section 24, Township 17 North, Range 14 West. Ornet 45, to amend the Metropolitan Planning Commission's fee schedule for the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Unified Development Code relative to fees and applications for determination of no material effect. Ornet 46, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor lease agreement of city-owned property located in Leadbetter Heights, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101 Encado Parish to Shreveport Green for the purpose of leases to maintain and improve the subject property. Said property is not needed for public purposes.
Okay, motion and second on that?
Second.
We don't vote on that, right?
Right.
Madam Clerk, would you proceed the ordinance of second reading and final passage?
Ornet 27, amending the 2021 Capital Improvements Budget.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes seven to zero.
Ornet 28, authorizing the mayor to sell Decato Parish Communications District Number 1, a political subdivision of the state, surplus city-owned immovable property and all improvements thereon located at 2890 Southland Park Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana.
So moved. Question postponed.
Motion seconded. Any discussion?
I think they said postponed. Ex postponed.
Oh, I didn't hear that. Of course, sorry.
So moved.
All right, motion seconded.
To postpone.
Postponed.
Postponed.
And any discussion? Let's vote on postponement.
Who was the second on that?
It was motion by Councilman Green and seconded by Councilman Nicholson. Correct. Okay. I wanna make sure I got it right.
Nicholson.
Is that like a dime and a nickel?
Yeah, dime and a nickel.
Better than a pennieson was my late grandfather by marriage's joke, Councilman Bubman. Better than a pennieson.
All right, postponement approved. All right.
Ornet 32, amending the 2021 General Fund Budget.
So moved.
Motion to postpone. And a second. Councilman Green seconded. And any discussion? Then let's vote for postponement. Motion postponed has been approved. Seven to zero.
Amending the 2021 General Fund Budget. Ornet 33, amending the 2021 General Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second. Second. Okay, any discussion? Then let's vote, please. 32.
33.
33. 33. And that's approved also.
Ornet 34, to implement a reduced municipal penalty for misdemeanor possession of marijuana, tetragel, cannabinoid, and chemical derivatives thereof.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded by the vice chair. Any discussion? I had one question, Ron, on this one here. What does that do with state law? Does that state law trump the city on this ordinance here? Or how is that done? It's a couple things. That and also if the state police makes... Do they issue summons? Or does it come to city court?
Doesn't the legislation? Let me look at it. I think the legislation reads that they get a summons. But let me look at it.
A summons, yeah, I did see that. You're right. Okay, I got you. Thank you. Okay, any discussion? Then let's vote, please.
Can I ask Councilwoman Taylor a question? Just real quick, and you can sum it in 15 seconds if you need to. Why is this needed to be done?
It's gonna take longer than 15 seconds. Ready?
Ready.
There's always been a disparity when it comes to marijuana, especially in black and brown communities. But I think that we also have to take a look at what we're doing here at the local level. On the federal level, you're going to find with Senator Chuck Schuman, you're gonna find with Senator Cory Booker and Senator Wynden where they are issuing legislation to decriminalize marijuana, but also as well as going in and applying restorative justice, which is very much needed. There are a number of individuals who sit in our criminal system that have small amounts of marijuana, and this has ruined their lives. And so when we look at these particular laws and how they have affected our veterans, how they have affected the mental health community, poor communities, this is a major infraction for black and brown people. Do we actually want to ruin somebody's life over this where they have the inability to go over here and find employment, housing, and increased economic development? So we have to look at these particular factors. And then it's our hopes that when we pass this at the local level, that the state will take a look at this, because at the federal level, this is being examined. And I appreciate Councilman Nicholson and this bipartisan support that we have in him asking for me to be a part of this because it means just that much to me. I lobby for medicinal marijuana for qualifying conditions with epilepsy and autism. So it's legal in that aspect. But this is not a free-for-all for anybody. Let's not get that mistaken, that you go out here and you have marijuana and you can just do what you wanna do. That's not what we're saying. But we are looking at this at the municipal level and want these things to be enacted. $50 fine, community service that you can assist with, but it's not a free-for-all for you to go out and do this. But the impact that it has among community is great.
I think that's the part that some of the citizens have reached out to me about. And I don't know if nobody else has had that. It's just, you know, we have so much other drama going on in the city. And then is this an open range for them to just go or for people to go ahead and just, oh, I can do this with minimum repercussion? So that part is the part that I think that I had some reserves on along with, well, another piece, but that got to me when I started getting the phone calls about this. So, and Councilman Nicholson, you fully agree and support that statement?
I do look, and I will say for myself that, you know, from a conservative Republican perspective, this is not particularly popular legislation. But, you know, as I described at our last meeting, I've had experiences as a lawyer that have convinced me that the enforcement of marijuana possession laws has been uneven in this community and elsewhere. I don't approve of abusing marijuana or any of the drug. I'm not looking to encourage that behavior. But I also do not believe that anyone should be arrested or incarcerated for possessing a small amount of marijuana. I just don't think that's right. And this is what we can do at a local level to move that conversation forward. And I, look, I respect different perspectives on this, but I am fully supportive of this legislation, and I ask for my colleagues' support.
I do as well.
Ms. Chair? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to say, one is, Councilman Nicholson, I'd like to just say thank you to you. Normally, when it's not in your neighborhood and when it's not affecting you and when basically it's not your people, normally, we turn our heads and look the other way. Once I had one of my parishioners, a young man who was in school. And one day, one summer, he went by some friend's house, and he walked in the door. And as walking in the door, they just put a marijuana cigarette in his mouth, and they snapped a photo. If the wrong folk had been there or showed up, it could've ruined his life. But after that incident, I counseled him. He was basically embarrassed. He was sorry. He was not a smoker, but it just happened. His life could've been ruined. He was not a smoker, but it just happened. His life could've been ruined. He turned his life around, and now he is a top-of-the-line model citizen, doing a great job for this country. And here again, I'd just like to say thank you to you, because you possibly take a lot of heat, but you had enough nerve to step up to the plate, to do what's right. You know, there's, as Pastor was, he put scriptures, and it was blessing Mohammed did, but, you know, doing others as you would have them to do unto you. You know, when we had, and I was explaining it to an individual today that had not, he was not black, and he didn't understand why we were doing it, and I said to him that you could have a bushel of powdered cocaine, and you go to court, you got you a lawyer, you get a slap on the wrist, six-month probation, and you're cool. Plus, you got somebody to call. Back in the day, when crack, when cocaine, when economics was down, they said, okay, how can we make money? They said, let us make cocaine available for everybody. So therefore, what happened is, that's when crack came about. And they, the reason they call it crack is because when they cook it, it pops and cracks. So therefore, they said, okay, what if a guy only has a dollar? What if he got fifty cent? What if he got a quart? You can take one crack, cut it up, give him fifty cent worth, keep going. It's about economics. But then, when you come to powdered cocaine, I don't know, I mean, you my lawyer, I don't tell everybody, but I...
You don't need a lawyer for that, Councilman.
That I got you on retainer, and so therefore, we can talk law talk, you know, 'cause it ain't their business, but I got you on retainer, and so you can tell what the penalty is different. You can tell the disparity in powder and one rock, how much time you'll get for that if you bust it. I mean, you, you know, you explained the story beautiful before, and I really appreciate that, and I just wanna say thank you publicly, and not just pull you behind the door and say, hey, man, thank you.
Amen.
I just wanna say thank you publicly for helping black and brown people in this day in time.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Then let's vote.
Oh, my vote.
Motion passed. Okay, we have nothing on the table to come off, rolling table legislation. We have no property standards or appeals, and are there any appeals, Madam Clerk?
There are no appeals.
Reports from officers, boards, and committees? Is there clerk's report?
Yes, we did receive an appointment letter for Ms. Kay Medlin to the Airport Board on March eighteenth, and she's subject to confirmation at the next council meeting.
Okay. Mayor Perkins, do you have any additional communication?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, does a council member that'd like to have additional communication?
I do. Residents of North Holland, and in the North Market area, there will be a town, there will be a town hall meeting with Bayou butts and booths regarding their liquor license, not their liquor license, their liquor expansion, that they're wanting, and they're asking you to attend the meeting to provide your input. That's going to be Wednesday at five-thirty at thirty-one seventy-six North Market. So, in District A, this residents in North Holland and around the North Market area.
Ms. Kay?
Friday and Saturday, we'll be in Caddo Heights, starting at eight a.m., starting at Hattie Perry Park. We're gonna be going block, block, block by block, starting Friday and Saturday of this week, but this is a continuing project that's gonna be going on. You'll be hearing more about it.
Mr. Chair?
Members of the council, we have a request from the city attorney going to executive session.
Reverend Green.
Oh, I'm sorry, Reverend Green.
Thank you. Ms. Chair, I'd just like to announce to the folk in District F that we're gonna have a cleanup on April the tenth, and Councilwoman Taylor said that she was challenging us, that they was gonna have more stuff, so I just asked that you all in District F that's hearing me now, that we need some help on that particular day, April the tenth. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Executive session to discuss the following: T. Scott Bernice versus City of Shreveport, and Ellen Chisholm versus the City of Shreveport. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Bring that, please.
Then we'll vote. Go into executive session. Please vote.
Tell him sorry. Maybe he is gonna use his mind. Mine's wet.
Vote.
Huh?
Vote.
Vote. What I voted on? Hey, mine, hey, Tony, mine, Ron made, Ron turned his coffee on my...